Hey Jen.
No, yes.
Seven eight.
Seven.
Um.
We'll start.
Seven o'clock.
You should be on the, you're private on the email.
Good evening. We would like to call to order the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake City Schools Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with section thirty-three thirteen point one five of the Ohio Revise Code. Mr. Tornello, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bear?
Here.
Mr. Edie?
Here.
Mr. Roskis?
Here.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Here.
Mrs. Menser?
Here.
We have a quorum?
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. To ensure everyone is aware of the way these meetings operate, we want to share the following. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval. Board members can discuss the items with the superintendent and treasurer. Board members are not permitted, per Ohio Meetings Act and Sunshine laws, to conduct conversations regarding board business outside of a public meeting. Tonight will be the first time the board can conduct conversations as a whole regarding the items on tonight's agenda. Board meeting agendas are always available through the district's website for public viewing prior to the board meeting. Community members can always email the board with questions or come and participate in the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment provides an opportunity for the community to address the school board directly. In order to participate in public comments, participants would sign up before the meeting. When signing up, you are provided a copy of our public participation policy. Participants are asked to abide by those requirements. We will now move on to our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve item two A, approval of agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item two A, approval of agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion?
Mr. Tornello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Edie?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Dr. Ward?
I'd like to call up Ms. Cindy Thomasetti, principal of Royal View Elementary School tonight, who will recognize some outstanding staff and students.
Good evening, everyone. The first person I would like to recognize is Harper Pollock. If you could come up. Harper is an exceptional student, both academically and socially. She is very outgoing and always shows our PBIS Rocks, which stands for respect, ownership, cooperation, kindness, and self-control towards others. She is very compassionate with her classmates in need and with other students, especially when working safety patrol before and after school. Her ability to work with younger students is amazing. She is patient, kind, and helpful to all. She is a leader and positive role model for Royal View Elementary. She is always willing to help her classmates with subject areas they are struggling in. Harper is also very artistic and loves drawing. All of these qualities make her a special young lady. Because of the exceptional qualities Harper possesses, she was selected by the fifth grade teachers to represent the fifth grade students at Royal View. We are very proud of her and know that she will continue to be successful inside and outside the classroom. Our next student is Logan Mavard. I know it's embarrassing, Logan. You can do it. When we think of Logan, we think of a well-rounded child. He is compassionate and is always ready to learn. He cares about his work and his classmates around him. He is always respectful to his teachers. He loves sports and enjoys talking sports. He shows so much enthusiasm on and off the field and towards others around him. He is driven to always better himself and willing to help others, too. He follows our PBIS Rocks program, always exemplifying respect and ownership, kindness and self-control. He is competitive but also encourages others to do their best. That's one quality that makes him so special. We are so proud of him and know that he will continue to be successful inside and outside the classroom. Next is Carolyn Darrell. You can do it. Carolyn is a very valued member of the staff. She has worked in classrooms for students with multiple disabilities, students with emotional disturbances, as well as having been a one-on-one paraprofessional. She relates to all students and works hard to ensure that they have what they need to be successful. Carolyn exemplifies what it means to be a team player. Not only is she willing to step in during a crisis situation and volunteer to help with anything extra that needs to be done in the building. She always has a positive attitude and is happy to be at work. She makes all students feel valued and cared about. Carolyn has a no-nonsense approach that students respond to. She isn't afraid to hold students to a high standard, either by redirection while at the same time rejoicing in their successes. At any given moment, you can find her playing soccer or serenading a student. She maintains high expectations for herself, her team, and her students. She is just a natural with students while being dependable and supportive to all around her. She knows how to think outside the box to meet students' needs. She goes above and beyond on a daily basis to make everyone's day better in any way possible. So I will read this resolution. Whereas paraprofessionals are dedicated and compassionate employees, they consistently demonstrate exceptional patience, understanding, and a genuine love for learning in their interactions with students, providing invaluable support and encouragement in their academic and personal development. And they collaboratively collaborate effectively with teachers and other staff to create inclusive and supportive learning environments for all students regardless of their abilities or needs. They actively participate in professional development opportunities, seeking to further their knowledge and skills to better serve the students, and go above and beyond their regular duties to create positive relationships with students, families, and colleagues, fostering a sense of community within the school. They are a true asset to a school team and serve as role models for all who know them, exemplifying dedication, compassion, and a commitment to making a positive difference in the lives of students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Willoughby Eastlake City School District hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude to paraprofessionals for their outstanding service and dedication to the students, staff, and families. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be presented to you for Royal View Elementary School as a symbol of our profound appreciation for your tireless efforts and profound impact on the lives of students and the community as a whole. And last but not least, Sherri Thompson. Sherri is an asset to the Willoughby Eastlake District as a speech-language pathologist who dedicates time in and out of the school hours to provide effective, functional, and quality therapy for students in need. She spends time researching products, theories, and tools to not only better her knowledge but to always improve the instruction she's providing to others. She works with verbal students, spending time improving their social skills, speech sounds, and overall interactions with others. Additionally, Sherri has worked on providing our population of nonverbal students with modes of communication that they may not previously had exposure to. She spends time with vendors, learning new devices, and troubleshooting when there are problems. She spends time with teachers and aides, educating them on the importance of devices and how to improve their knowledge to better work with the students. Sherri spends time with parents, educating them on devices so they can increase their interactions they are able to have with their own children. Our teachers have had conversations with parents who have students that are new device users who are unbelievably excited at the things their children have said to them or shown them while using their device. Sherri spends time with students with devices. She learns their interests, favorite foods, pets, family members, and adds buttons to their device to create a unique device so that students can discuss things they enjoy. Sherri truly is a go-to person in the district for anyone with speech questions or concerns. She's a wealth of knowledge and information and an asset to our school district. So this resolution honoring you. Whereas, a speech-language pathologist demonstrates exceptional expertise in working with students with speech, language, and communication disorders, and fosters a positive and supportive learning environment for all students, promoting inclusivity and understanding of diverse communication needs. You collaborate with parents, teachers, and other professionals to ensure comprehensive and individualized support for students, and you contribute to the professional development of colleagues and the advancement of the field through participation in workshops, conferences, and research. You are a true advocate for the needs of students with communication disorders and make significant contributions to overall success of students. And the challenges faced by speech-language pathologists are numerous, yet resilience, creativity, and unwavering dedication to the betterment of our students and community remain exemplary. Recognizing the contributions of speech-language pathologists is essential in fostering a culture of appreciation and support for the crucial work they undertake daily. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Willoughby Eastlake School District hereby recognizes and honors the contributions of speech-language pathologists in our educational system and the positive impact they have on the lives of students. Be it further resolved that this resolution be presented to Sherri Thompson from Royal View Elementary School as a symbol of our appreciation for your tireless efforts and profound impact on the lives of students and the community as a whole.
Thank you. You all are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting or feel free to leave and take pictures in the lobby. Whatever you wish is fine. We're going to continue on with item four A, public comment. Mr. Tornello, do we have anybody this evening?
Rosemary Mason?
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, yeah, I gotta stay. Definitely.
Okay, I'll see you soon.
I'm good.
Shall we close the door?
Rosemary Mason, three four eight nine one, Amy Court in Eastlake. Madam President, members of the board, first I would like to thank the current Board of Education for their service and accomplishments throughout the year. I would, as many before me have done, like to express gratitude to existing board members, John Roskos and Erin Reedy. This has been a very productive team. I feel that the current board's productivity is largely due to their level of comfort with each other. Members openly discuss agenda items, and I feel that board members cast votes based on the group's efforts to reach understanding and consensus. The board as it currently stands has only been together for just over a year, and they have accomplished much during that time. Now two members are leaving us and two new members are joining the board. I am optimistic for the new board members for several reasons, one of which is the desire to have an educational system that is not going to fail the children. One of the metrics tracked by the Ohio Department of Education is college, career, workforce, and military readiness. This is a measure of how well-prepared Ohio students are for future opportunities, whether training in a technical field or preparing for work or college. While the metric does not specifically look at work readiness, fifty-four percent of the graduated class of two thousand twenty-two were engaged in gainful employment versus thirty-seven points five percent, thirty-seven point five percent statewide. A new superintendent is focused on preparing students for the future by ensuring college, career, workforce, and military readiness. By continuing to provide the resources to support this goal, the board will ensure that the Willoughby Eastlake City School District will never fail the children. Another reason concerns technical and other vocational opportunities for students. I looked into this topic since as an Eastlake resident, I am a neighbor of the NCI. I was pleasantly surprised to find that our school district, in collaboration with other school districts and the NCI, offers twenty-five different career and technical education programs. These programs run the gamut from arts and communication to engineering and transportation to, of course, health sciences and to public safety. By continuing to support access to these wonderful programs, as well as additions when resources allow, the new board will help ensure that our graduating students have the best opportunity for success in their adulthood. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item five A, appointment of president pro tempore. Do I hear a motion to approve item five A?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve five A, president pro temp.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second five A, appointment of president pro temp.
Discussion?
So I think as a board, especially being the exiting president from last year, I think it makes a lot of sense for consistency's sake through the new year to nominate Stacy Menser to be the president pro temp, just keep things consistent until the vote on our organizational meeting, because the handoff last year made things difficult.
It sure did.
So.
Anyone else?
Well, since I caused that last year, I'm not going to say anything.
We got through it. It worked out, but it'd be easier this way.
Okay. Mr. Tornello? Do I hear?
Just so, the vote is for President Menser to remain president until the organizational meeting. So I just want to clarify.
I thought about nominating myself, but.
Well, I think just so the community understands that if there's another person nominated to be the president, Stacy would remain the president until December thirty-first at midnight, and then on January first, the new president has to take over, and it's not easy.
Until the org meeting.
Until the org meeting.
Which has to occur before January fifteenth, so.
It's a lot of transition in a short period of time, so this is the best.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Edie?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Madam President, Stacy Menser will remain president until the organizational meeting.
Yay. Moving on to six A, board members' business, board discussion. Does anyone have anything?
So, I do have a few small things.
Go ahead.
Okay. There's a lot going on today. So, one of the things that we had wanted to accomplish this year was to start making traction on building a board framework. And the board framework would allow us to be a proactive unit instead of a reactive unit and to get together and work at a cadence on work in advance of the need. So when we onboarded, I we, Stacy and I, when we were first selected, our administrators gave us a wonderful calendar of what to expect as a board member and what times of year the routine things occur. And it's a great time, as we're onboarding two new board members, to reintroduce this board framework and to have conversations about it. So tonight, I'm just providing a copy of what was previously provided to every sitting member, because John, you got a copy when Stacy and I onboarded, and then Jamie and Erin. Erin, when you onboarded, we provided it as well. So I'm just redistributing it for future conversation with our new board members. So obviously, well, it would just be for Jamie, you've already seen it, and Stacy to review in advance of a future work session in which we'll discuss what it looks like as a board to be proactive, and also what meetings do we need at what cadence to get ahead of that work to work collaboratively. So everything's there.
Thank you.
Jamie, would you add anything? I'm sorry, Stacy, would you add anything to that?
So I think one of the things we were talking about is, as we have scheduling challenges when you're looking at potentially seven people's schedule, that we talked about, hopefully at our organizational meeting, we can talk about setting a time that is not necessarily a standing meeting that we would need to have, assuming there was no business to conduct, because we don't want to have meetings just to have meetings, but that we could pick a date, perhaps a different Monday of the month, since our board meetings are typically on Monday, where we could kind of save that on our calendar, and then at the regularly-scheduled meeting, we could discuss whether there were items that we would want to discuss, whether it's a work session or executive session in that follow-up meeting. That for me, just balancing, you know, work and my husband's schedule and my daughter's schedule and all of that would make life easier when we're looking at the calendar. I think having a set date where we can all get together and we don't have the challenges of whether it's at a meeting, bringing our calendars or discussing, I think it does simplify the process. So that is definitely something I'm in favor of. Again, not just meaning to have meetings, but given that we're going to be proactive, we're going to be looking at these things, I'd love to pick a different Monday of the month where we can say, if we need a second meeting, that's when we'll have it.
And then for full disclosure, we have met and reviewed the cadence of events with our administrators to see if it aligns to the work that they are both working on in 2024, and additional conversations will need to occur as the year continues to see how we can sync our work with the vision work of Dr. Ward and Mr. Charnello. That's it.
Anybody else?
So, being the last board meeting, I just wanted to reconfirm my commitment and my support to the, this Board of Education, to the oncoming board, to Mr. Charnello, and of course, Mr. Ward. This last year and a half, year and three months or so, has been an opportunity that is, has been such an honor and a privilege. And also recommit myself to the community and to the schools and the children, the family, everybody. I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be here for the first two months. I'm going to sit in the back and observe, but after that, I want you to know, all of you, that I'm going to be here, I'm going to be on these committees that, that this board has put together, because this board has had a commitment. We made a promise to the community, to the students, the staff, of what we wanted to do, and we lived up to that promise, and my promise doesn't end after tonight. So I just wanted to recommit myself to all of you guys before I start getting emotional. I just want to say thank you to you three for your voice in appointing me to the board when you did. It's been a pleasure and honor, and I'll still be around.
Trying to get us to cry in public.
Oh, I could keep going, but we want to get out of here, so.
We have stuff to say to you two, but we're saving it for a different portion of the meeting. We're not cold-hearted.
Not like now, we don't anymore.
Thank you. We can move on to item 6B, Mrs. Schatzman, providing the legislative update.
Okay, perfect. I will try to go quickly down my long list. Many people saw my notes and commented on the two-sided piece of paper, so. Last time, we talked about the Senate confirmation of the governor-appointed nominee for the Director of DEW, which is Steve Dacken. He was confirmed by the Senate this past week. The State Board of Education is still looking for their new superintendent of public instruction for the state of Ohio. So they did have a meeting today, they'll have another one tomorrow, and they had an executive session last week where they narrowed down their candidates to three finalists that they will interview on December 18th. So two of them are sitting superintendents, Jeffrey Greenley and Paul Kraft, and then one of them is working at the ODE right now, well, the former ODE, so I guess now is part of DEW, and her name is Julia Simmerer, so I will keep you posted as we hear more about that. I also sent you guys an article by Howard Fleeter where he really discussed the complexities of House Bill 920, the 20 mil floor, all of the different pieces and parts of our very complicated property tax structure, which hopefully highlighted a little bit of when you move one thing in one area, how it can technically have cascading effects. So with that said, the Senate passed a substitute version of House Bill 187, which we'd been talking about. They actually changed the structure of it, so instead of being a forced three-year average, what they did instead was extend the homestead exemption. And a big change, which will impact all schools, including us, is that with this expansion, instead of covering 100% at the state level, now the state will cover 50%, and schools will cover the other 50%. So this can have a huge impact on us. One amendment that was proposed, although did not pass by one of our state senators, was to hold schools harmless for the lost in revenue, but that was not accepted. So again, OSBA, OASBO, and BASSA testified, asking the Senate to wait and put this over to the Joint Property Tax Commission work group that's going on in the new year. They did not choose to do that, but hopefully the work group will still address and look at this. Has not passed the House yet, since it came over from the House in one form. It has to go back this week for concurrence, so the Senate and the House meet one last time before the holiday, before the new year, this week, and people are expecting it to pass in the House. So I will let you know if that does happen. I think it's very likely. I've been in contact with our state rep, Dan Troy, including last week. He attended our senior night out event at South High School, so I've had various conversations. He understands the impact to schools and is trying his best to advocate for us. I also reached out to Senator Serino, asking for a meeting with Mr. Charnello and myself. I reached out to him by email and phone, have not heard back yet, but I will continue to try, because he sits on the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which heard this bill, and he did have some comments about schools and how they were using their surpluses and finances and what our forecasts look like. So we would love the opportunity to sit and talk with him, so I will continue to try to set up that meeting so he could better understand what our perspective is. So I'll be doing that. In terms of other bills, House Primary and Secondary Ed passed House Bill 70, requiring schools to adopt policies about over-the-counter medications, which we have policies for that. They passed SB 17 about requiring capitalism and financial literacy, and they passed HB 206, which deals with expulsions regarding dangerous situations. They also amended House Bill 312, which is about establishing a regional partnership program, and they now want to require ESCs to be part of that. We also had some bills going through Senate Education Committee. House Bill 8 has a substitute version. This is about parental notification of student health and instructional materials, and there's additional hearings this week. There's fourth hearings on SB 1A2 about academic interventions, and SB 168 about updating the ORC regarding licensure, assessment, screenings, and et cetera. There was no vote last week in the Government Oversight Committee on HB 68, which combines a bill on healthcare and single-sex sports team, but there could be a vote on that this week. And then in the Higher Ed Committee, there was only written testimony accepted on HB 183. That may also go for a vote this week, so I will keep you updated as things progress. Given that this is the last week, there might be a lot of activity, so I will keep you guys posted as I know more. That was as quick as I could go.
Thank you. Moving on to 7A, approval of minutes of November 1st, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve 7A?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 7A.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 7A, approval of minutes.
Discussion. Mr. Charnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Do I hear a motion to approve 7B, approval of a minute, of minutes of November 20th, 2023?
Madam President, I move to approve 7B, approval of minutes of November 20th, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second item 7B, approval of minutes, November 20th, 2023.
Discussion. Mr. Charnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensor?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Charnello, you're up with the treasurer's report.
Thank you. 8A, the monthly financials for the month ended November 30th, 2023. We're continuing to see our cash balance decrease, as we will continue to do so until February of '24, when we get our next property tax collection. As Vice President Mensor mentioned, the Senate did pass House Bill 187 last week, which will expand the homestead exemption. This exemption will be shared 50/50 by the state and the school district. However, I did re-listen to it today, and all other local government entities will be held harmless. So they felt that schools could afford it, so they wanted the schools to pay the other half. And it's just simply too early to know what the impact will be to Willoughby Eastlake at this time, just because they've expanded it up to $75,000 is the income threshold. So I don't know how many people are eligible or will apply and what that looks like, so I think it's a wait-and-see game at this point. They did do a tentative estimate, which seems extremely shallow. The cost to school districts over a three-year period would be about 97 million, but I don't see how that's possible, but we'll see. The last time-
You think it'll be much more, correct?
Much more. The last time they provided some estimate was like the casino revenue, and they missed by 50%.
Or the school vouchers.
So, and the school vouchers, they missed on that one, too. So we'll just have to wait and see what that looks like. We'll get some data points in the first half collection, we'll probably get more in the second half collection, once it becomes more known that you can apply for it, because House Bill 187 does have an emergency clause tied to it, so it will go into effect immediately. Interest rates today, we've now earned $1.15 million, which is 43% of our expected $2.68 million here today, and interest rates are beginning to slow. Since last month, interest rates only went up one basis point, which is one or .01%. It's not very much. However, we are still working with our financial advisors to ensure that we lock in investments while the rates are still high. Our expenditures are behind our estimates. Purchase services has the largest variance between estimate and actual, and that is tied to transportation services and our tuition bills to other school districts. These services are occurring, however, they not billing, not being billed in a timely manner, which is okay, because that means we get to hold on to that cash as long as we can and make some interest. Our expenditures are behind estimates for substitute employees. Conversely, extra duty and overtime pay are both exceeding estimates. This is due to us having a difficulty finding enough subs to cover our absences throughout the day, which means everyone else is picking up the slack. However, this is an issue across the entire state. So this is not a Willoughby Eastlake issue, this is a school issue. 8B, resolution accepting amounts and rates. This is an annual requirement by the County Auditor's Office. Needs to be approved by the end of December, and they were able to get us a revised copy today that combined the two levies from May of 2023. So I was very happy to see that we only have five levies now that we need renewed, and that is up for vote.
Do I hear a motion to approve 8B, resolution accepting amounts and rates?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 8B, resolution accepting amounts and rates.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second item, oh my gosh, 8B, resolution accepting amounts and rates.
Discussion. Mr. Charnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskos?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensor?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. 8C, transfer funds. This is part of an agreement a few years ago with students at the South High School store. We agreed to loan them money to buy an embroidery machine after a very impressive presentation, and in return, for the, every year after that, for the next 10 years, they'd pay back their debt, interest-free. It's a pretty good deal. However, remove those funds from their operating account to their equipment replacement account so the students can see what happens when you have to pay that debt, even when somebody else before you takes the debt and you now have to pay it back. So these kids might not even have been there for the presentation, and they still have to pay the debt back every year.
And we are all wearing the product of that embroidery machine tonight.
You are.
And I'm keeping mine.
It's yours.
8D, grant application acceptance. The Stronger Connections Grant is a competitive grant that we were awarded. This grant is to provide students with a safe and healthier learning environment. We are allocating these funds to grow towards, to go, we are allocating these funds to professional development for our staff, and I would like to give a shout-out to Gina Kervin, wherever she is, Gina. Gina's the one who found the grant dollars and submitted the grant, so thank you very much. Giving you kudos.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you.
Kudos to Heather Dodd back there.
Thank you.
8E, establishment of new account. This is to establish the account for the Stronger Connections Grant in item 8D. 8F, purchase orders. These invoices were received prior to the purchase order being in place. The literati is due to the library waiting to create the requisition till after they had the invoice. This is for a book fair, so I've asked that they put in an estimate in the future just to prevent this from happening again. Orange Schools, this is a then-and-now for students that attend the Excel Tech Programs housed at Orange. This is another situation where I've asked just to put in an estimate so we can avoid these situations in the future. TLC Transportation Services, this is a new vendor. We typically use either Hogan or Willow, and they were just excited to find a transportation company that could meet the needs for these students and forgot to put a requisition in. So it happens, and they are aware, and the requisition is now, the purchase order is in place now. And then lastly, we have audiologists and hearing impaired services from the ESC. I'm not sure why they billed us just now for services from May and June of last year, but that purchase order was closed because it was from last year. 8G, student activities. This is to establish the budget, purpose, and goals for all these activity, where these are, we have a couple, no, one new one, which is the Eastlake Student Council, and two revisions. So anytime they want to change how they want to spend their money, they have to get revisions made to their account. 8H, first one, Aldi donated a $250 gift card to Royal View for the multi-disability students as needed, and the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame donated tickets valued at $2,115 to Edison's fifth-grade students to attend Play It Loud on January 11th, 2024. Thank you to those two donors. And lastly, 8I, sale of surplus equipment by public auction. This is to auction off items that are no longer in service or being used by the district. We have many buses coming out of service out as a result of getting new buses this year as part of our agreement with Peterman, and three new ones of our own, and we are auctioning off a truck, battery chargers, hydraulic service jack, track, hydraulic service jack, and some tractors. So if anyone wants to buy some of those things, feel free to register. I'm sure that you're going to get some good deals. I think you can get a school bus for 2,000 bucks.
All my dreams have been answered.
People like retrofit those and make them into really cool-
Those tractors, I don't know, I might look into that.
Well, now the community knows, and they can auction and bidding warping it. Dr. Ward?
All right. Happy Monday in December. One of my favorite parts of this job is I spend Fridays in the building. I get a chance to sit and talk to students that pass by and staff that pass by, and I typically start my Fridays at one of the high schools. This past week, I started my day at North High School and the opportunity to talk to a dozen or so students about their experience. In addition to that, I have the Student Advisory Committee that has met this past week. The Student Advisory Committee is our second meeting. This is an amazing group of young men and young women from across all of our campuses in Willoughby Eastlake. At our meeting this month, I had the chance to hear from them about issues that are impacting their experience in their schools. I also was able to hear about some of the great student-led work that is going on across all of our campuses and buildings. The focal point for this conversation this month was a theme of kindness. How do we continue to create schools where kindness can thrive? How do we create a culture where all of our students feel welcome? Finally, this group committed to a district-wide project in the spring to focus on hunger. The team is looking into a food drive and awareness campaign during a period of time in the spring when most people might not be thinking about this issue. This initiative will be completely student-led, and I can't stress enough what an impressive group of young men and young women this is. They're also very honest if you ask them how things are going, and so I appreciate that as well. The first meeting, they were a little bit shy. The second meeting, they kind of just opened up, so really neat. Item nine B was our Senior Citizen Night Out. On December fourth, we had our second annual Senior Citizen Night Out. This year, over two hundred seniors attended and were engaged in fellowship, a great meal from our food service staff, and amazing performances from our North High School band, our Edison first-grade students who stole the show, our Northern Lights Choir from North High School, who were on Fox Eight News this morning, and our South High School Drama Students. We also had an art and STEM projects that were on display, a sneak peek as well at our Rebel Express Run Store. What a great night to celebrate a community. We often say that the closer you get to our campuses, the better we are. This evening event was no exception. Thanks to everyone who helped put on this special night. I appreciate our community partners that showed up as well. And then lastly, it's very brief this month. Item nine C, I want to take a moment and thank both of John and Erin. You know, I was reflecting tonight on the first semester of my superintendency and my time in Willoughby Eastlake, and I kept coming back to the notion of public service. I believe public service is about the greater good. I think public service is about giving back and dedicating both your time and your efforts to advance very important work. Today, in this climate, public service is not always easy. It's hard sometimes to put yourself out there, and it's also hard to stand for something. John and Erin, I want to thank you both for being model public servants for this community. Each of you put your heart and soul into this work, and at a time when you have never wavered during the first fifteen weeks on putting students first and keeping learning front and center. This, from my perspective, has always been a winning formula for school districts. Erin, you keep our students and their well-being front and center. It's been a theme that I've heard from day one. I'm also looking forward to the fourteen thousand emails that you will be sending shortly. John, I want to thank you for your quiet, patient, steady leadership. As our most senior board member, you brought both wisdom and calm to this work. And finally, you know, they never, they say it's never as good as the board that hires you. And so just know that I want to thank both of you for taking a risk on me as well and also taking the chance on my leadership. When I started Willoughby Eastlake, I asked this team, do you want to be a factor or you want to be a family? They chose family. I want to thank you both for being part of the Willoughby Eastlake family. This is a special place, it's been better because of your service. The ultimate question for any leader is this, did you leave the campsite better than you found it? I believe the answer to that is resounding yes. And so, gentlemen, enjoy the short video put on today by some of our high-quality Willoughby Eastlake staff.
Hi, I'm Candace Platt. I'm the principal at Jefferson Elementary. And on behalf of all of the elementary students and staff, I'd like to thank you so much for always putting students first and helping us as we prepare them for their future.
Hi, this is Chip Plush, principal at Willoughby Middle School. On behalf of all the middle schools in our district, I want to thank you for your tireless commitment and support to our students, our staff, and our community. You truly have made our district a better place. Thank you for all you have done.
Hello, my name is Eric Frye, the principal of North High School. And on behalf of the high school staff and students of the Willoughby Eastlake City Schools, I'd like to say thank you to John and Erin for your steady leadership through some very challenging times for our district. And just know that as we head into some very exciting opportunities as a district, you were a huge part of that success. And thank you.
But wait, there's more. Well, I think it's our turn, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, let's do this.
I have to compose myself first. What if you guys go? It's been a great opportunity to work with both Erin and John. We had a very collaborative team, and you will be greatly missed.
Keep it short, Bear, keep it short. I think the last sentence of what you had said, you know, did you leave it better? When you left, can't say it just, you know, you can't, you keep it short. I am a better person, a better parent, and a better community servant because of both of you, honestly. And I want to thank you for your help and guidance and support and contribution. And John, I'm never gonna understand finance anywhere near you. What am I gonna do without you? I mean, Nick's good, too, but sometimes he needs talking to you. But I thank you both, and you'll be absolutely missed, but excited to still see you as a contributor in other ways. Thank you.
Oh, gosh. I almost cried during the video. I cry every time I talk to you guys. So just thank you for everything. I think you both know how I feel about you. I think I'm the only one sitting up here who's never worked with a different board. So like Dr. Ward, I will always remember you guys as my first board. I hope to see you both around at many, many things. I'm confident that you'll be there. And thank you for welcoming me, helping me learn. Definitely, John, I will miss your financial expertise. And Erin, I will miss your perspectives on mental health, and you're always good for some funny jokes at the board meetings, so I will miss those, too. But both of you guys are just great people. Again, everything everyone else said, loved working with you. I will miss you greatly. Thank you.
Want to keep up with those jokes, and I said I wasn't gonna get emotional, but you know, if I get a little tear, you know, shed a little tear.
I thought he was gonna take a shot of water.
No, I, right my eye. Again, I just want to say thank you again. You know, this past week, there was a student that reached out to me and and asked me some questions on mental health and the criminal justice system. Both of those are where my background is, where my specialization is. And to be able to still help this student with their class project and stuff like that, and helping them to understand how mental health, how the criminal justice system, how they work together to continue to educate these students and to be a part of this community. Never met this student before, but it was great that they reached out to me, and it really meant a lot to be able to help them. And that's why, again, I'm gonna remain committed to this board and to the community and the parents and the staff and students. And although I can't share my antics from that side anymore, I'm sure we'll all still continue to be friends, and you guys are more than just friends. And coworkers, you guys are family. And you are more than welcome to come by the farm and hug a quail. And
You know how I feel about birds.
And I just want to thank you all again. And thank you, Dr. Ward and Nick, for all of the support, all of the time and attention to answering any and all of our questions and concerns. Thank you for just everything that you have all done and you'll continue to do. And I have a lot of confidence in what you guys are gonna be doing in the future. And just thank you again, and, hold on one second, I'm just gonna drink this one, hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you to the community for your support. It, it's been a lot, it's been a lot. Damn it. Okay, I'm done.
I realize you didn't have much of a choice four years ago since I ran on opposed, but firstly, I wanted to thank the community for allowing me to serve for four years. And I also wanted to thank not only the current board for their support, but also the prior board members I worked with. And also, I'm very hopeful for the future with Dr. Ward and Mr. Charnello working for us. And I know, I know the board and this administration will continue to work for the best of our students, so thank you.
I have to say something, or I'm the only one that didn't say something.
Make it good, Mr. Charnello.
Well, John, you're my last surviving board member that hired me. Thank you for taking a chance on me. It's been a crazy three and a half, four years. So thank you for being there to navigate fourteen board members with me. And the only other person that probably understands property tax as much as me, so I appreciate you. I'm not saying we talked about property tax a lot, but knowing that you knew what I was talking about made me feel good about myself. And then Erin, in this entire board, it's not how long you've been on the board, it's what you've accomplished. And you guys have accomplished a lot. So if you think about what all you've accomplished between, you know, interim superintendents, finding Dr. Ward, combining an emergency levy and putting it out ten years, and just, you know, being collaborative, transparent, and everything you guys set out to do, it was a lot of work, and I think you guys put us on a good path forward, and you know, that was all you guys. So, thank you.
No more tears. Dr. Ward.
No, I've got to drink this.
Okay. All right, ready? Back to work for ten A. This would be School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. These agreements are set up to establish the roles, expectations, and relationships in assisting in positive relationships between police officers, school staff, and students. The previous agreements expired and are now being renewed for another three years.
Do I hear a motion to approve ten A, School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding?
Madam President, I vote to amend or to approve ten A, School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second item ten A, School Resource Officer, MOU.
Discussion.
I think it's less of a discussion and more of a huge thank you and shout-out to our SROs and to the local police departments that help source and provide the SROs to our schools. I know that they have an extremely important job, and as of late, they've been a really important partner in helping us all feel a sense of community and safety, so thank you to them.
Mr. Charnello.
Mrs. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Edie.
Yes.
Mr. Ruskus.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Yes.
Mrs. Mincer.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item ten B, Multi-Force Systems Annual Agreement. This is a yearly agreement for the software and the technical support for the fuel system and transportation.
Do I hear a motion to approve item ten B, Multi-Force Systems Annual Agreement?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve ten B, Multi-Force Systems Annual Agreement.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second item ten B, Multi-Force Systems Annual Agreement.
Discussion. Mr. Charnello.
Mrs. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Edie.
Yes.
Mr. Ruskus.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Yes.
Mrs. Mincer.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
For item ten C, Teacher Professional Organization Agreement. This is a yearly stipend for the past president of the Northeastern Ohio Education Association. The NEOEA reimburses the district for this stipend.
Do I hear a motion to approve ten C, Teacher Professional Organization Agreement?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item ten C, Teacher Professional Organization Agreement.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second ten C, Teacher Professional Organization Agreement.
Discussion. Mr. Charnello.
Mrs. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Edie.
Yes.
Mr. Ruskus.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Yes.
Mrs. Mincer.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item ten D is the adoption of the following policies. Item ten E is parent-guardian transportation agreement revision. We see that each month. Item ten F is an overnight and state field trip request for our swim team. Item eleven A is administrative personnel of note. And a quick note of congratulations to Assistant Principal Julie Blair, who will be retiring at the end of the school year. More later as the school year progresses, as we honor retirements in the spring. Item eleven B, Certified Personnel of Note also. We have a certified teacher, Laura Parsons, who will also be retiring effective at the end of the year. We'll look to honor these retirees in the spring. And for eleven C, I defer for a moment to Mr. Charnello.
Thank you. A couple months ago, we approved the retirement resignation of Assistant, longtime Assistant Treasurer Donna Crox, and then her replacement, Michelle Peters. So the search for a suitable replacement for Michelle began, and it was extensive. And we have found someone. It was a long process. She might have given up almost on the last interview, but we have Ms. Elise Allison in the back. She's going to be replacing Michelle Peters. She will start on January third. And Kathy Reenie was in the interviews, too, and I think Kathy was pretty happy with Elise as well. And if she didn't, she didn't say so. And Elise comes to us with six years of accounting experience, so we're very happy to have her on the team, and we welcome her to the Willoughby Eastlake family.
Of note there also, Joan Morton from Food Service is also retiring, effective January first. So congratulations to Joan, and thank you for her service to Willoughby Eastlake. Item eleven D, supplemental contracts. This would be for those contracts outside of the scope of the normal contract, sports and clubs. And then item twelve A, the first reading of the following policy. Please review for first reading a revision to policy zero-one-six-eight, minutes. The purpose of the revision is to provide flexibility in where we can meet and hold work sessions and special meetings. By adding some flexibility, we now have the option to take the conversation to our buildings and alternative settings throughout the district. At present, the technology record and the cost to have someone run the equipment requires all meetings be held in one location. And so these meetings are still public meetings, they're open to anyone, and will be noticed, and will have agenda with notes. Thank you for your consideration to this policy change. I think that's all we got.
Moving on to thirteen A, Adoption of Consent Calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve thirteen A?
Madam President, I make a motion to revise item thirteen A, Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second thirteen A, Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Discussion.
I want to just, once again, thank both of you, as well as Mr. Patrick, for reviewing the policy so thoroughly and answering any and all questions prior to them being for the second read tonight.
You're welcome. Mr. Charnello.
Mrs. Bear. Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to fourteen A, Adjourned to Executive Session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding economic development? And there will be a vote after we return from executive session.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve fourteen A, Adjourned to Executive Session.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second, uh, fourteen A, Adjournment to Executive Session.
Discussion? Mr. Charnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah?
Yes.
Yeah, my kids love their fries.
Where's Aaron? We lost him.
Yeah.
We need Aaron.
I feel like a five-year-old.
We lost him. He's noodling.
Oh, you could do it. You can drop the noodle. The noodle nook.
We have to wait for Aaron.
It's like the Ring doorbell.
Andrew, you can edit that out, right?
Aaron, you're fine. You can leave it open.
Do we have to motion for discussion?
Nope. You just...
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve 14B Community Reinvestment Area Agreement?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 14B Community Reinvestment Area Agreement.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second item 14B Community Reinvestment Area Agreement.
Discussion? So...
Nick, would you be able to tell us about the financial implications of this?
Sure. This property in question, back in 2010, had a valuation on it of six and a half million dollars, and it's currently valued at $600,000. So it's in pretty bad shape. The current tax bill is $22,000. If this were to be approved, let's just go through that scenario, they would still pay 25% of the additional improvements. They're expecting to invest between $12 and $15 million into this project. I used an estimated increased value of $6 million, assuming, you know, you're not going to recognize the entire amount because they're doing like $300,000 for a new sewer line, things of that nature. So if the tax bill and the improvements was $40,000, so the new tax bill would be $62,000. The new revenue to the school district, because it's only the inside mills, because there's no 20-mill floor in Class II properties in Willoughby Eastlake, the new revenue to the school district would be $2,520, assuming $6 million of improved valuation. The taxes to area businesses would be reduced by a total of about $57,000 per year because, once again, not the 20-mill floor, so House Bill 920 would kick in and lower the tax bill for all area residents that are Class II properties. So the CRA, the give, the years 11 through 15, because years 1 through 10 are mandated by state law, they can do it without board approval, 75% in 10 years. They don't have to ask us. So years 11 through 15 are the, actually, the ask. That would be about $7,500 per year, for about a total of about $35,000 in forgone revenue for the school district.
So it is not revenue that we're currently getting that we would be losing? We're kept completely whole on the revenue on the unimproved property that we're getting today? We'll continue getting that, plus we would get an additional few thousand dollars in the developed valuation, which would be that 25% for 15 years. We have no choice over the first 10 years. If we were to say no to this, we would... Potentially, they could choose not to go forward with the project, or they could go forward with the project, and we could stand to recoup potentially $7,000 extra a year. So we're talking about that difference. After the 15 years, we get 100% of the improved property valuation and any other increased property valuation from the development in the area. We can say where the property is, right? It's in the...
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the Plaza. It's called the Bishop-Queen Plaza. It's over in Willoughby Hills, across the street from, like, Dunkin' Donuts, correct?
Formerly Lomans Plaza.
Thank you. Thank you. You can tell I did not grow up here. Don't worry, Miss Menzor got you. So I want to thank the board for taking the CRA very seriously and for Dr. Ward and Mr. Charnello for doing additional investigation and fact-finding for us. Also wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Oskus and myself had met with Mr. Somich and Dr. Ward and Mr. Charnello to discuss at length what are they doing? Why are they doing it? Why are they asking for it? What would happen if we voted yes? What would happen if we voted no? How is the business impacted? What's driving their decision-making? And it was a very informative meeting, very open and transparent, willing and able to answer any and all questions. And as I walked away from that meeting, one of the things that I, as a board member, needed to consider most was, one, my being a good steward of district finances and ensuring that we get every dime that we're owed, that we're doing the best that we can to operate our schools, and we're holding our government accountable for giving those funds to us. And in this situation, the CRA and the business owners and the city of Willoughby Hills are all players. And the other part that I thought about is being a good steward of the community. How is the decision that I make as a board member impacting Willoughby Hills and the constituents of that community? But lastly, one of the things that hit me the hardest that I reflect on before any vote is, I'm here first and foremost to advocate for our students and their families, and that area is in serious disrepair. And if anybody's been over there at pickup or drop-off time, you'll notice that there are many buses that fill. I want to say there's been two buses that I've been stuck behind, and the entire bus fills with students from Willoughby's, like, that attend our schools. And I think about those students and families and the impact of my decision, which could impact the developer's decision to continue with the project. And if there's anything I can do as a board member to impact the quality of their community and the quality of their education, I need to take that seriously. And that is impacting my decision today, is that this area and its improvements will provide a safer space with more access to resources within walking distance to a large portion of our community that we serve. So I think that's a really important part outside of the numbers and the government. So I think that's a really important part outside of the numbers and the government and the CRA agreement. Our decision does impact people and they're first in my decision.
Another thing, you know, CRAs, after having some discussion, are pretty common with a lot of communities, I know. A lot of communities right now are trying to do improvements in their area and thinking about, you know, what's best for the children. This board did a lot to try to get these levies combined because the communities were demanding that we did something about these levy cycles. You know, in five years, when the next time we have to go to the levy and tell these communities, "Look, we may need some more money." This could impact, you know, perception of the community. If you gave this abatement for these additional five years, although it's minimal, the perception could be, "Why did you give them this tax break and now you're asking us for money?" So this is also, this is a big concern of mine, and this is like a quarter of a mile from my house. So this is definitely going to affect my family and things like that. But at the same time, I'm thinking of the history of this property. Like Nick had said, it was valued at $6 million and now it's $600,000. And this wasn't something that just happened overnight. I mean, this is over time. We had Giant Eagle that was in there and tried to make it. We had the South Furniture that was there and tried to make it. Although I love seeing that there's somebody there to do it and to try to revitalize that area that desperately needs it, I also have to think how hard we fought to try to get the support of the community to combine these levies, to continue to support the schools. And we always hear, "We want the schools to be a good steward of the money that we're giving in our taxes." And so we're still, this decision, I'm still thinking about the children, whether I vote yes or no, because it's gonna, it can affect them with a yes vote, it can affect them with a no vote. And this is a very difficult decision, and so I talked to a few other community members and, you know, because that's what we're trying to do, is the board, we're trying to get more involved and more communicative. I don't know if that's a real word, is it? Okay. With the community and talking about what we just discussed, what are their thoughts? And so the way that I'm going to vote is going to be based on my discussions with people, the discussions that we all had, how this is going to affect everybody. And so that's, when I make my vote, I wanted to just express that, some of the reasoning behind it.
In my mind, I see a number of potential long-term benefits from this, and I realize that we would be foregoing, that we would possibly be foregoing some property taxes over five years. But when I look at the potential economic benefits and the effect it might have on the improvement of that property may have on the residential properties of surrounding area and potentially keeping houses vacant and keeping people moving into that area and potentially improving those properties over time as well. I think it's beneficial to, I don't, I think it's, it'll be a long-term benefit to our community.
I think when we look at it from a strictly financial standpoint, even though we're talking about the opportunity cost of potential revenue that we've forgone, we have proven through the calculations that ultimately the school receives more financial revenue from moving forward with a guaranteed project and improving the property than the alternative. So even though we're saying we're abating money, we are still, by guaranteeing that this project moves forward under the CRA, the school will ultimately receive more revenue. I think that's correct.
Correct.
And just one more time before we do vote, Nick, could you say again what that, what the school district would miss out on in that five years?
About $7,500 per year.
And then at the end of that 15th year, we would get 100%
Correct.
of that value.
But during that time, we're still receiving the tax revenue on the existing valuation of the property plus an additional $2,500. And it's kind of like the delta is the $7,500, not that we're losing $7,500 during that year.
Correct, it's just forgone.
Any further discussion? Mr. Charnello.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
No.
Mr. Ruskis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
I am so torn on this because financially, as I said, and you probably all sat up here thinking, "Oh, she's just going to vote yes," because that's what I was, that's what I was talking like, because financially it makes sense. What I have a problem with is schools not being held harmless, not being held harmless by the state legislature who just took and automatically extended this, I don't know, in the last 12 months, from 50% guaranteed abatement without approval of schools to 75% for 10 years, which is a huge amount. And then this moving forward and this project not holding us harmless for an additional five years. And I worry about the precedent that we're setting because I think we have to be fighting at the state level. And Mr. Charnello and I went down there to fight for our property tax owner because every dollar really does matter. And in this case, it is technically a small amount of money that we're foregoing, but I'm worried, severely concerned about the larger implications and not at some point putting our foot down and saying, "No, you have to hold schools harmless in this." Like, the legislature has already done enough to us. So for that reason, I'm voting no.
Mrs. Menzer?
And now I'm the swing vote. I too am torn on this vote because I see both sides. However, I have to side with our taxpayers on this and vote no.
Motion fails. Two, three.
We're still in meeting.
Before we do a motion to adjourn, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season. We do not have our January meeting set due to the board changing and other things, so stay tuned for those dates on the website. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
I will make that second to adjourn in 15A. And again, thank you all very much again for the last year and a half and for showing up and sticking around tonight, and thank you to the rest of the board as well.
Any discussion? Mr. Charnello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
We adjourned at 8:48 PM.